We'll have previous minutes, student school presentations, parent groups, open to the public, three minutes per speaker for no longer than 60 minutes. And I just want to remind everybody that when it comes to our open to the public session, everyone has three minutes to come to the podium and speak. We will not be responding to any questions or comments at that time. At the end of the session, Dr. Walkley or I will attempt to answer any questions or address any concerns at that time. So each person has three minutes, but comments will come later from this part of the room. We will then have our superintendent's report, our correspondence and board comments, personnel agenda, consent agenda. We do have an addendum to the personnel agenda. We will not be using a second executive session. We will then motion to adjourn the meeting. I have a motion for previous minutes. If we made a correction first. Okay?
So we made a motion.
Mike, we can just note that a correction was made?
Yeah, it doesn't need to be done by motion and second. If the correction can be noted, then Kelly can make the correction and that'll be the minutes that the board will be acting upon and approving.
Do we have a motion for the red call? Yes, you have a motion. We have a motion to approve the previous minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes of the previous regular meeting held on Monday, October 27th, 2014.
Second.
Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carried. Do we have any students or school presentations tonight?
My name is Tyler Erickson. I'm a senior at Beacon High School. I am the vice president and co-crew chief of the Beacon Players Drama Club. And I have Dan Lewis here, who is also the co-crew chief of the Beacon Players Drama Club. And we just wanted to tell you about our show that is coming up next weekend, November 21st, 22nd, and 23rd. It's $10 for adults and $5 for seniors and students. So if anyone's interested, you know, we appreciate seeing you there. So thank you.
Thank you.
What's your name?
Footloose.
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 Sorry.
Thank you.
My name is Peshean Numalo, and I'm Beacon High School's National Honor Society president. Since September 22nd, Beacon's National Honor Society has been working hard to collect donations from our members and peers within the high school. We've reached out to other schools within the district like Rambout and Glenham, and so far we've collected an impressive amount of non-perishable food items as well as monetary donations that are going to go to the different food pantries that Alpha Kappa Alpha works with. As we conclude our work with Project Hope, National Honor Society members have begun signing up to volunteer to package the donations. And as we've reflected on the countless cans, boxes, and packages of non-perishable items, we can't help but be extremely appreciative and grateful for the generous donations from the Beacon Teachers Association, Beacon's Own Drama Club, Mr. Romanino, and the athletic department, and the administration and staff at the board office. We truly appreciate your time and donations. And even though we have two days left until donations are collected and counted, we don't want anyone to feel like they've missed out on the opportunity to donate. National Honor Society is still graciously accepting non-perishable and monetary donations. Again, we are grateful for your generosity of the Beacon community and are proud to celebrate another successful year of diligent work with Project Hope. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Franva Curtis. I am co-advisor with Janet Gaspar for the National Honor Society, great group of kids. I'm reading something that Janet wanted to present tonight, but she isn't feeling well, so she went home. But here it is. "I am a co-advisor of the National Honor Society, and I would like to thank the community for its support of all endeavors over the years, in particular, Project Hope. This is the fifth year that National Honor Society Beacon Chapter has collaborated with Alpha Kappa Alpha sorority to replenish area food pantries, and I would like to express how important the Beacon community and the Beacon City School District in particular has been to the success of the food drive. The schools have helped in some way. The elementary schools and Rambout Middle School combined have collected and in some years have surpassed the number of food donations received at the high school. The staff and administration at the board office has also collected food over the years. We have relied on the clubs and teams at Beacon Teachers Association to donate prizes and gift certificates to encourage competition among the student body. In past years, Mr. Romanino and the athletic department have especially been generous. The BTA has donated coveted brothers gift certificates, and the drama club has contributed tickets to their ever anticipated musicals. Mrs. Vipers has asked her health students to contribute as a group. In the community, we have the support of the businesses for whom many of our students work, and Dutcha Stadium has unstinting in their generosity this year with four family packed tickets. Panera Bread has supplied food to those students who were packing and sorting, and a local farm, Fishkill Farm, donates bushels of apples to add perishable food to the pantries we can accept. This year has truly been a community-wide effort, and the entire school community has been so generous that we, Janet and Fran, have had to come and thank you personally and publicly. This year, the BTA has given us a tremendous boost in our ability to replenish the supply of food for families in the area by working together and sharing the fruits of their hard work labor with us. We are extremely touched and grateful. Because of the efforts of the BTA, we will have an unprecedented number of food items for each pantry. Teachers coordinated the drive in each school where staff and faculty donate hundreds of one specific food item. With six schools in the district, that's 600 items. Some teachers coordinated, some counted, some bagged, and some hold the bounty to a destination. So many caring people helped. The reach of the generosity of the district has a far-reaching effect. Mrs. Gibbs of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority organizes the drive, finds sponsors to contribute to the volunteer effort, and coordinates her sister sorority members, Beacon, National Honor Society, and members of other student groups to come together to replenish 13 area food pantries. Three in Newburgh, three in Poughkeepsie, two in La Grangeville, one in Middletown, and four right here in Beacon. Our food drive ends November 13th, when we will gather all the food and sort it, pack it, at the QWL. I wish you could see the gratitude of the pantry volunteers when they come to pick up their allotment, because you deserve to know the good that our working together has done. Thank you." This was a slideshow of the pictures of what we've done so far. If you can see, the teachers did like an assembly line to put those 600 items in packages. And we'll bring them over on Thursday. So, happy. And does Ms. Gibbs want to speak?
Hello, I'm Mrs. Naisha Gibbs, and I am a member of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated. I don't do well with these microphones. And this is my sorority sister Patricia Davis. She is a retired teacher from the Beacon City School District. I'll give you a little bit of history about Project Hope. Project Hope started five years ago, and we collaborated with Beacon High School because we used to come here and do the Ebony Fashion Fair. I'm not sure how many people remember that, but I said, you know, let's coordinate and let's collaborate right here in Beacon. So we started that, and Project Hope stands for Help Other People Excel, and the other part of it is Operation Heart, Helping to Empower Area Residents Together. So we found, we started with seven pantries, and next year it ended up with nine. This year, we are up to 13. And as Fran said, she listed all the places where we donate the food. We have been given the QWL at Downstate for free. The superintendent is wonderful there. A lot of our food collection sponsors, the majority of them are right here in Beacon. And I believe one year you guys were food collection sponsors for us. I remember sending a letter. The correctional facilities, the schools here, I'm with the Arlington School District, so the Arlington School District participates in it as well. We have fed, and it's tallied and calculated from the evaluations, over 10,000 people, individuals and families. What else can I add about that? Oh, and a big, big thank you to the Beacon Teachers Association, because this is their first year partnering with us, and I see this moving forward in more, in a larger, on a larger scale. So I just want to say thank you, and I'd like for you guys to really commend these students, because each year we get a new set of students, and each year they are better than the last group, and they just dive right in and do it. Fishkill Farms comes with a truck with 6,000 pounds of apples, and these kids get up in the truck and bag them, and we divide them up among the pantries. So if you're not doing anything on Thursday, November 13th, from 3:00 to 8:00, we can use some extra hands. If you're not doing anything on Friday, November 14th, from 3:00 to 6:00, we could also use you there as well, and that's when the pantries will be coming to pick up. We do have, I did get confirmation from Southern Dutchess News that they would be coming, but I sent a press release to over 30 media outlets, so hopefully they'll come. We were featured on YNN News one year. So it's a really, really wonderful effort, and I'm blessed, the Beacon National Honor Society, and all of the advisors. So thank you so much, and thanks for your time.
Do we have any parent groups tonight? Open to the public, who would like to speak? Yes, sir.
My name is Reed Arlow. I am class of 71. Madam President, board members, fellow alumni. Beacon High next year is going to be 100 years old, our old friend over there on Fishkill Avenue. Granted, we're not there anymore, but the time and the memories still are. And I have written something here, which as you said, we'll mention in question comments later, if I may permission to read this. "Hall's a Time, Class of 71, Beacon 100, 1915-2015. Wake up Wheaties OJ, walk car bus, locker, homeroom, first bell, subjects varied, gym, study hall as well. Lunch menu, long week, Friday at last, last bell, weekend Hammond, weather seasons, another year, another prom, pomp and circumstance, a smile of concrete, a big sigh, happy 100, Beacon High, Hall's a Time." I think she deserves something, and on your comments, I'd like to answer that.
My name is Nicole Lucas. I'm a resident of the city of Beacon. I'm a former student athlete and an alumni of Beacon High School. I am honored to have been inducted in the Beacon High School Hall of Fame back in 2003. I'm currently a Beacon High School Fame Committee member and volunteer travel soccer coach for the Beacon Soccer Club. I grew up in Beacon and decided to root and raise my children in this wonderful city. I truly believe it takes a village to raise children, and in Beacon, we do have that amazing quality. Thirty years ago, I had the pleasure and honor of meeting Eric Romanino. I was 12 years old in the sixth grade at JV Forestal School. Mr. Romanino at the time was a phys ed teacher for South Avenue School. It was that field day held at Hammond's Field, where all the Beacon elementary schools would have competitive athletic events to demonstrate abilities. Mr. Romanino approached my parents and myself, not knowing who we were or who I was, praising my achievements and suggested I enroll in track or some soccer, as a development of organized female sports in Beacon was in the works, and they needed participation. We will never forget his kindness, as he then offered my family, who was a hard-working family, funds and money was tight. If we didn't have money to cover registration or equipment, to please let him know that I had abilities that should be embraced. My story is one of thousands of student athletes that Mr. Romanino touched or helped in some way in his 34 years of service. Beacon is a very unique city. We have several fields, facilities named after many individuals who have had outstanding community citizenship. It's history and what makes our city full of pride and honor. On behalf of the Beacon Bulldog Hall of Fame Committee, we respectfully have received the board's response to our request on the dedication of the Athletic Wing or Gymnasium at the Beacon High School, in honor of retiring athletic director this year, Eric Romanino. Quite frankly, board, we were a little disappointed on her response. We found it insulting. Your suggestions to possibly plant a tree or a flower garden in his honor, we found appalling. He's quite alive and well, and we were shocked that the board would deny an honor for a man who has done nothing but serve, sacrificed for our children, his community and district for 34 years. He is the pioneer of Beacon High School Athletics Department success. Eric Romanino is in his 34th year, as I stated, among his accomplishments, and the list is long. I hope I get through this within three minutes. 108 wins, 65 ties, and only three-loss record as a varsity wrestling coach. 100 wins as a varsity baseball coach, making him the only coach in our history with 100 wins in two sports. 1994 Section 1 Coach of the Year. Wrestling coach, his teams won six league championships and two divisional championships. As a baseball coach, his team won four league titles in 1991, a Section 1 championship. In 1995, he honored the first scholar-athlete team in 2011 or '12. We had 19 teams earn that distinction. Section 1 wrestling chair for 20 years. Served on the Section 1 Executive Committee. Director of Physical Education, Athletics, and Health Sciences since 2001. Named the Section 1 Wrestling Coaches Association in the Hall of Fame induction 2014. In 2012, our athletic teams were recognized with the Section 1 Sportsmanship Award. In 2013, Eric was named Section 1 New York State Public High School Athletic Association Director, Athletic Director of the Year. Eric has served in many capacities and has held many hats in 21 years as AD, including Director of Physical Education, Athletics and Health Services, Assistant Principal, and now Acting Principal, Assistant Principal down at Rambout, and in previous history at Beacon High School. We respectfully ask you to reconsider our request. I also wish to ask the board, was there an official vote? Were all members present for discussion, or was this done behind closed doors? I please ask you to put your personal conflicts aside and honor the service this man deserves. We request to have a response before the next board meeting if possible. Pending your approval and support, we wish to honor Mr. Romanino at his retirement, which comes to the end of term in December. Thank you and good evening.
Name is Frank Bug. Dr. Walkley, Melissa, at the last meeting, I requested some information be made available to me, which the superintendent and the chairperson agreed to. Is that information available tonight? I asked for information regarding the enrollment, total number of staff, and student enrollment in the district, as well as the racial breakdown in each category. And I was told that that information would be provided to me at this meeting.
We'll answer the questions at the end.
Pardon?
We'll answer the questions at the end.
Okay. I would like then to take the remainder of my time to, why are you saying it's going to be done at the end? Why can't you do it now? If I may. This is something that I want everybody to hear, not something that, you know, is half the people.
That's the process that the board president and the board has agreed upon, and the board president laid that process out. So I'm not going to respond further until the end.
Madam Chair, could I ask another question? There are a number of issues that come before this board, that people in the community and the audience, or citizens, taxpayers, and everything else, who have questions and issues that they would like to have resolved. How do you resolve some of those issues that take more than three minutes? When do you meet to discuss with people about issues that are of concern that can't be discussed or resolved in three minutes? So I'm asking, is it fair of you to put that kind of restriction on it? Or do you have some other way of entertaining issues and questions that take more than three minutes to discuss? Or is that to be answered later?
Yes, Mr. Bug. We've moved to that process for the sole purpose of three minutes, to offer everyone the opportunity to speak for three minutes. If we venture back and forth, there's no way to manage to that three minutes. So we ask that you speak. We write down the questions and concerns, and at the end of everyone speaking, which can be no longer than 60 minutes, we respond to those questions, and that is solely for the purpose of not going back and forth in conversation.
I can understand.
Because that's not what this purpose is for.
I can understand why you might put some restrictions on the amount of time that people can talk. But my question to all of you is, how do you resolve substantive issues that are of concern to people in the community that take more than three minutes? I'd like to know how you get these issues discussed. Do they ever come before the board? Or do you just give a 30-second response after the meeting? So could you put that on your agenda to address this evening? And give me an answer to that, please?
Good evening. My name is Siobhan Lucas, and again, I'm a parent and a resident of Beacon City School District. And I have children, five children are in the district, and I am also an N W A C P Education Chair. I have one question, and then I have one statement. I think that I need to make it clear for the record who I am and what I do, because it's being misinterpreted. Education Chair means that I take interest in children and cases, cases that are dealing with education. It does not have to only be special education. If a parent asks me to advocate for them, it can be for numerous reasons. It can be they feel uncomfortable, they don't understand your literature, they don't understand their rights, they may not even understand the protocols. And that is what my job is as the N W A C P Education Chair, is to educate that parent with the information that you guys don't have time for, that I can kind of agree with, Mr. Bug. It does take more than three minutes. And some of those CSE meetings for IEPs are rushed for 45 minutes, which I've spoke with Frank Mohern, and it does not, sometimes it depends on a parent. It takes more than 45 minutes to address their concerns and explain everything in detail when you have another back-to-back appointment. So with that being said, that's where I, Siobhan Lucas, was chosen and have my experience and professional training and certificates, to sit with that parent, to explain to them their rights before the meeting, the day before, week before, to help them to understand so they will not be lost at a meeting. My second thing that I do, I also run youth. I help your young men and your young women feel better about themselves. I've just been aware that you have homeless kids in the district. Myself, my boss, which is the president of N W A C P, we have done food for them as well. I've just adopted one of your homeless, to make them feel better about themselves, help them with therapy. I've talked a little bit with Mrs. Gatton. You know, it's a positive thing, like the young lady said, with Beacon, of sticking together to make Beacon stronger, not for it to be weaker or to be torn down. I think, again, people are just misinterpreting who I am. When I'm chose by a parent and our contract is signed, that lets leeway for me to advocate for a parent, to make it easy for you guys. And when I say you guys is yourself, your staff, your IEP holders, your regular ed teachers, not deal with the screaming, hollering, cussing, fussing parent that you may be like, oh God, she's at a rate, I don't know how to deal with this. We'll, I'll deal with that. My boss deals with that, to bring them down, well, listen, we'll sit with you to get through this, so your child can get that education. That is my role that I play. If something is going on in education, as far as like bathroom doors being locked, and we have more than eight parents coming to us at our meetings, yes, that is something that I'm going to bring to your attention. I've tried nicely doing it in the email, I've tried nicely writing certified mail. When no one responds, I have to state, yes, and this is not behind anyone's back, and this is why I chose to say it tonight, and my boss had told me that I have to say it tonight. The next step is writing to the state, because that means that you're ignoring us, you're not taking the time to see if this parent is asking or requesting certain things, or seeing that the advocate is trying to help you guys, so that we can all work better at a frame instead of being separated. But when you're being blocked from playing that role, like I just was told, I'm blocked, that Dr. Walkley will not allow me to advocate for two of my clients, which I cannot share their name, then there's nothing else that you can do. Now a parent feels like, well, just forget it, let my child just fail. Along with that being, excuse me, guys.
I have to ask you to wrap up your thought?
Yes, I'm about to wrap it up right now.
We're well over four minutes.
Okay, no problem. With that being said, I just wanted to let you guys know that that's what we deal with, and we also deal with bullying as well. That is one of my issues, and I explained it with Ms. Gatson as well. Hands to yourself, walk away, those are the issues that N W A C P Education Chair deal with. It's not about a lawsuit. So I hope that I educate you guys with who I am and what I do, and I hope I be treated much better than what I've been treated, and you have a blessed night.
Would anyone else like to speak?
Yes.
You have someone right behind you.
Good evening. Bet you're glad tomorrow's Tuesday. Chad Stark, taxpayer citizen. At last board meeting, I asked about the drink switch that was being sold in the Cafeterian District, and Dr. Walkley said you were going to look into it, so hopefully you had that time and opportunity to do so. I still see it on, you know, being sold in the cafeterias. I read in the paper today that there was going to be a meeting in Wapengers about Common Core. It's open to the public, and I was wondering if anyone from the board or from Dr. Walkley's office was going to attend. Another question is, what happened in the buildings, in various faculty rooms? There are soda machines that are located in those for staff to be able to use. And I was wondering if the district receives any of the money from those machines, and if so, where does it go in the budget, or does it go back to the schools? And my favorite question. At past meetings, I've asked, where are we with position of superintendent? Recently, Wapengers Central School District removed the interim tag from their superintendent, appointed him as a regular superintendent. Part of what that does is take away any of the angst that might be felt throughout the district of just having it interim. It kind of, you know, settles everybody down to know that person's going to be here for... to be here for a period of time. I've asked before with no answer. Hopefully, you'll be able to give an answer tonight, if not tonight, in the extremely near future, because as one, I won't let go, is what direction is our board going in with this position? What decisions have you made? What is your ultimate goal here? Are we looking to do another search, or are we looking to keep Mrs. Dr. Walkley on board for the long haul? I know she has a two-year contract, but that doesn't answer the question that myself and several other community members would like to know. It's our money that's being spent, and we deserve an answer what the direction is going to be. Thank you.
Dennis Pavlov, Beacon resident. I was really not planned, prepared to speak tonight, but I decided to show up tonight. One of two reasons. I like to partner with Nicole Lucas and her comments today regarding Eric Romanino and the renaming, the naming of something here at the high school, whatever you decide to, whatever they want to decide to name, the gym or whatever the case may be after him. I'm for that. And if you think that, you think the group of people up there is just two or three of them, it goes by the thousands. So if you're going to have another meeting here next time, and you want people, you better add another room on to hold everybody here for their comments, at three minutes apiece. Now, my second, now, the other reason why I'm here, I was at the last meeting here, I came to the last meeting, and I mentioned some things that maybe, Madam President, you didn't want to hear. You didn't want to hear, you didn't want to hear my comments, you didn't want to hear what the substance of my comments were? So I really didn't appreciate being cut off of my three minutes of my time. Your attitude was a reckless disregard to me and the rest of the residents that come here to voice their concerns. It showed nothing more than your shoe size and your inept attitude towards me and the rest of the residents in the city of Beacon. Next time, give the residents their due process of three minutes. Thank you for your time.
Would anyone else like to speak?
I'm just going to jump around a little bit. So I'll start with the juice. We did, actually, Amory did some research on the juice, and we talked with our food service director, Karen Pagato. Thank you. And what she talked about is the type of sugar. There are different types of sugar, and I have to tell you, I'm not an expert on it. But it's the type of sugar that is in the juice, and that certainly, there are other things that have maybe less sugar, but the type of sugar that is used in the product is not as healthy as the sugar that is there. Another part of the program I know that we're working on is teaching kids to make good choices. So if you want to be healthy, can you eat chocolate cake at the end of every meal? Unfortunately, the answer is no. But once in a while, can you have a piece of chocolate cake if you're, you know, monitoring other things that you're doing depending on your health? The answer is maybe yes. Maybe you can have a piece of chocolate cake. So it's about making choices as we go forward. And, Amory, do you want to get?
I also want to mention that that juice does meet the requirements of New York State Ed. We would not be able to provide it. And you also, you know, there are other things there that we sell that have sugar in it. So again, you know, it meets the requirements, you know, would, Dr. Walkley talks about choices, so would you have it every day or not? But we wouldn't offer to sell anything that didn't meet the requirements.
Right. And I'd be glad to send you the information that she sent in your email. I'm sorry, I just, I didn't bring it. I should have brought it tonight. The committee, I think that there was a piece from the feedback that you got that you left out for Mr. Romanino. The board asked that you bring a brainstorm list of ideas. You presented two ideas. The board asked for more ideas. So that offer is still open, if you would like to bring forward some more ideas to the board. I don't know if anybody's attending the Wappingers meeting on the Common Core, but what I can tell you is that we do send teachers and administrators to the, they're not, they're not monthly, and they're not in any regular order, but the state provides, they're called Network Team Institutes, where the updates for the Common Core occur. And we actually send a pretty good cadre of people to that, to bring back information directly from the state about the Common Core, so that we can share that within the district. There is currently not a plan for going forward with the hiring of a superintendent, so I don't know of any plan yet. I usually don't like to talk about information that is shared between myself and others, but I do feel that it is important, since it was brought up, that what I said to you, Mrs. Lucas, today is that a parent needs to call and make an appointment, that as an advocate, we need to have the parent become involved. You become an advocate for the parent, and I don't want to talk about the child and the particulars, about the particular student, because that is classified information. But what I can say is that we welcome parents to call and set up a meeting. They are welcome to bring an advocate to the meeting if they would like. And in terms of spending time in, working with you in your advocate role, I have sat in several meetings with you. Some meetings were quite lengthy. One was over two hours long. So I do want to say that the teachers and the administrators in the schools do have time. We do need to set up meetings for the time to meet with parents and any advocates that they bring as well. I wasn't sure what the, I must, I missed if there was a question about the old Beacon High School, the 100 Years Celebration. I'm sorry if I missed the question. Was there a question?
I, we are trying to put it together, an old type dance in the new gym downstairs. We're still working on that part. She's a tough old girl, and she has stood many years over there for a lot of people. And that plaque has sitting in the front there, and I just happened to look at it when they said 1915, and my God, she's going to be a hun- I mean, we're not there anymore, granted. And the gentleman who's running that building is finding it tough to run that old girl over there. I expense wise.
So what I'm hearing you say is that there's going to be a dance coming up?
We are hoping all this is spitballing. What I want from this is possibly get this in the yearbook for memory's sake. There may be a picture at the front of the building, and that old stump with that plaque over there from 1919 to 1920. That poor thing is just about finished. But, you know, we've got to remember something over there. There's a lot of memories of that old building. They don't make buildings like that no more.
So if you would please give me a way to contact you, I will put you in contact with the yearbook advisors, and we can see what we can do there.
But also, I just wanted to point out to that, Mr. Zoff had the idea that we have a newsletter coming out very soon, and we may be able to put some of the information in our newsletter, and see if we can get some additional support for that dance.
Do you still call it the Beacon Echo?
No.
I'm sorry, that's going back. I remember Vito De Cheseiro started, "I clean toilets," sorry to the name, he used big words.
In response to the amount of time allowed at a board meeting, what I do want to say, and I don't mean to be mean here, the board meeting is a business meeting, and by law, boards do not even have to open to public comment. This board chooses to open to public comment. So in, and I recognize that, you know, the board meeting is not a discussion, it's not a conversation. So I am doing forums, public forums, and they have been advertised the same way that a board meeting is being advertised. And that advertisement just went out today, and I'm looking over at Kelly, because I don't even know what night it is, even though I'm going to be there.
Next Monday.
Thank you, next Monday. So next Monday, there will be an open forum. The purpose of the open forum is to come and have a conversation. I will be there. Some of my colleagues will be there. We can answer questions. We can share information about the district that you may not hear in a board meeting. We have lots of things going on and only so much time for a board meeting. So you're welcome to come to that. There's time set aside for it. It's something that I'm trying out. I don't have a big process yet for it, so we'll see how many people come out, and see if we can start some conversations.
Where will that meeting be held?
The meeting's going to be held right here. We're going to start in the library, and if it gets too big, we'll come into this room. I have high expectations, so I reserve both rooms. So we'll see how that goes.
Will any members of the board be there, required to be there?
They are invited to come, as are, all of the staff is invited to come.
So who talks to policy issues and stuff like that if the board is not here? You're the superintendent, if you don't make policy. The board does.
So we can start a conversation if you would like to come. The next item is I do want to talk about the ethnicity information. There is a report that I am working on. It is required by law that this report be done every year, although it's only reported every few years, and it is equal opportunity employment from Washington, D.C. This is quite an extensive report, and I do have to say that it is not finished. It is due November 30th, and that information can be reviewed and be foiled at that time. What I did prepare for this evening is to share with you a context from which information I think people should know about ethnicity and ethnicity from the point of view of New York State. So I did bring some information to share with you this evening. This information is, was reported at the Regents' Meeting in May, and it talks about ethnicity across the state. And I'm hoping... What? Oh, this thing? So across the state, this report takes a look at ethnicity of the different ethnic groups. And the ethnic groups that are being reviewed, I'm sorry, I got to pick it up, Caucasian, African-American, Native American, Asian, Native Hawaiian, Hispanic, Latino, and two or more races. The Caucasian is always this color blue. African-American is the lighter blue. I'm sorry. So what happens with bifocals. The red is, I'll put it back down, the red is Asian, green is Native American, orange is Hispanic and Latino. So what this particular graph shows, and the purpose tonight is to not study the graph, but to give you some big ideas, is that across the state, 74% of school principals across the state are Caucasian, and as you can see, the rest of the pie is made up of the other ethnic groups. So about 25%. Once my report is finished, then you can compare that information to this information as well. These graphs right here talk about, over time, we're looking at 2008 to 2012, and the percents of different ethnic groups. So in this particular bar graph, these blue represent the number of African-Americans in New York State, and it says assistant principals, but I actually think it should be saying principals, because assistant principals are over here. So I think this is a mistake on the state. I think that should say principals. And what we see is there's a very slight increase, not up to 16% yet. And the same thing with Hispanic, a very slight increase, not very big, across the state over a five-year period. And then these represent the other ethnic groups. Down here, we can see assistant principals, assistant principals across the state, Caucasian is 63%, and the rest is made up of other ethnic groups. And again, I'm sorry, again, what we see is here, we have a slight decrease in African-American. We have an almost flat percentage of Hispanics, and we see a quite, a little bit higher curve of increase in Asians and assistant principals across the state. This is data for teachers, and we see across the state that 80, it's actually 82% of teachers across the state fall in the Caucasian category, where, and the rest of the pie is made up of other ethnic groups.
Dr. Walkley, is this in response to my question about breakdown of the...
It is in response to set the context of how Beacon, once the report is finished, how Beacon compares to the rest of the state.
This is nonsense and gamesmanship. I'm not going to play this game or nonsense anymore with this board. You know exactly. We've been discussing this since 2010, and you have not produced the data.
Well, Mr. Bug.
And I am calling you to attention for it, the entire board.
Mr. Bug.
This is absolute nonsense.
Well, Mr. Bug, you can walk away angry, but you're not going to get the information.
This is nonsense. You know what this is.
You're not going to get the information that you need. No.
Yes, I am. Yes, I know it. I'm going to get it one way or the other.
That's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about this evening.
This is nothing but gamesmanship on the part of this board and you.
It is not gamesmanship.
And then you come with this crap. Nobody want to borrow that. You should know how many minority instructors in the Beacon School System there is. And that goes for everyone in the board members, too.
Well, if you would like...
This issue's been discussed since 2010, and you haven't put up one piece of substantial evidence yet. So I'm going to do the next best thing. You're going to give me an answer.
Well, I'm going to give you an answer.
Yeah, you're going to give me the answer. I want it. Now, people have a right to get this information.
If you would stop bullying me, if you would stop...
I'm not bullying you nothing.
Yes, you are.
I'm letting you know that I think you're playing a game. And I'm not playing it with you anymore.
I'm not playing a game.
Thank you. Professor, please know that. This is a game. It's gamesmanship, and I'm not playing it anymore.
The rest of the information from the state takes the five major cities in the state and shows the ethnic makeup of principals across the state. This is Buffalo, and Buffalo, 53% of the principals are Caucasian. And in Rochester, 48% Caucasian. In Syracuse, 86%. In New York City, 50%, and in Yonkers, 44%. The rest of the information that I would like to share from the state is this chart. Is there a way to blow this up, make this clear? One of the things that we have talked about is recruitment. And in our hiring process, we recruit to a number of colleges in New York State, as well as other states. I did share at one board meeting that New York State has set aside a large sum of money to some specific schools, some of them right here in our own backyard, to recruit more minorities into becoming teachers. And this is the information that helps us understand why New York State is doing that. Currently, in teaching, for teachers in New York State, in the 12, 13 school year, 82% of the teachers are Caucasian, 8% African American, 7% Latino, 2% Asian, and 1% two or more races. And then we take a look at, well, how many people are available through the teacher prep programs that we reach out to as part of our hiring process? What you can see is that in some cases, even less, less people are available coming into the profession. That's one of the reasons why I wanted to share this information with you, to show that across the state, we are not the only district that is challenged by attracting minorities to come to Beacon and teach with us. And when you look at this information, you can see that it is a much lower percent of minorities that go into teaching. And if you read further on in the report, they give reasons for why that happens across the state. And I can make this report available by email, if you would like it by email. I can certainly send it to you, if you would like to see it. The report that I'm working on, that is required by, at, by the federal level, is quite an extensive report. It is estimated that it takes about five hours per response, because of the number of places that I have to look for information. And there are certain, only certain ways that I can gather information, as per the law. So something that seems like a very simple idea is not so simple in terms of this report. I have started working on the report, it is quite, has been quite time-consuming, there are 27 items on the report. So figure it out, that's a lot of hours for each item. But what I can tell you is, I believe I have about five hours left, and I will have the report ready by November 30th, when it is due. And then if somebody wants to foil that information, we'll take a look at it, there may be information that cannot be shared from that report, I certainly will work with our attorney, our school attorney, to determine that. So, in the second part of my report this evening, I did want to discuss our conference day. We just had a conference day on November 4th, which is Election Day, and the theme of the conference day was creating a culture of care and respect. And in any school district, regardless of who is teaching and who is not teaching, it is the culture that sustains us. And as somebody who I read, or who I do read very deeply, Stephen Covey says, is that you have to have relationships before you can have business. And the same is true in a school district, you must have relationships with students before you can teach them. And I think that that's part of what we've been talking about here, is how we build relationships with students, how our schools invite people into the school, or don't invite people into the school. And so our teachers spend a day doing planning with their principals by building level, and thinking about, thinking very deeply about the kind of culture that we want to have here. So that's the second part of my report. Thank you.
Do we have any more comments?
I have a couple more, so. First of all, tomorrow's Veterans Day, I'd like the board to consider acting on the veterans' property tax relief, having a discussion about it and/or thinking about implementing it, making sure that the veterans can take access to that, so they can help them out a little bit, I think they deserve it. The other thing that I would like to discuss is, on November 4th, the state has passed the $2 billion technology grant. Beacon has allotted 2.1, around 2.1 million. I would like to know how we plan on using that funds. And then there was an article with the New York Civil Liberties Union on October 30th, it was on NYCU.org. Beacon was on the list for denying eligibility, denying access for immigrants.
I'd like to correct that, actually. We're on the list because there are three documents which sometimes prevent schools from registering students, particularly immigrants who come into the country, who do not have an original birth certificate, is one of the documents, and there are two other documents. Currently in Beacon, we have 87 immigrants, and so we do not turn away immigrants. What we were cited for is that on our registration packet, we do ask for a birth certificate. However, we do not deny access to any children in the district. So Anne Marie is in the process of amending the form to say, birth certificate preferred, and that will make us in compliance.
Okay, great, thank you. I know there was 139 districts, so I wasn't just pointing out Beacon, but I knew it affected us. And the last thing is, I have a discussion about Eric Romanino and what to do, I don't think it needs to be behind closed doors, I would have it in public as well.
Just quickly to touch on your request regarding the veterans' tax cut, the board had previously asked Anne Marie to put together some research, because Beacon being drawing from multiple municipalities, some research needed to be done, and Anne Marie will be prepared in a future workshop. We have a little bit of time, but in order for this tax year.
Correct.
She will be providing, we've already requested it, and a presentation will be made to the board for us to take that action.
There's some choices that will be involved, which is why I want to quantify the information, be able to give the board the right information to make the right decisions, so I'll do that.
Do you like to talk to the technology grant, because I'm unaware of what he's talking about?
Well, actually, we were just talking about that. I have to say that our technology director now believes that we are rich, and is very excited to receive that news. We do have a technology plan, and I'm not certain how that money is going to be spent, but we do have a technology plan. And one of our biggest parts of our technology plan is the interactive smart boards that have been, that we've been installing in the school district. So Mr. Fashin will be working with Anne Marie, myself, and I'm sure his committee as well. We have, we are in the process of changing the technology in the district anyway, so it certainly is a welcome, a welcome bunch of money.
From my understanding, too, it could be utilized for like cameras for security and so forth as well.
Right. The criteria hasn't come down from the state yet, which I'm kind of surprised, so I don't know if they were a little bit surprised that it passed, because there was a little bit of controversy around it. But usually then we get some information from New York State as to how to go about doing it, so we're waiting for that.
Right. And in terms of security cameras, we already have a plan in place, and it's part of the capital improvement project.
Yes, we have, I may have mentioned it in my notes to the board, but to the public, we have a little, close to a million dollars left in our $12 million capital project. So we're trying to formulate a way to spend that money effectively, to get the building aid on it. Some of it has, relates to security cameras, because we had done a big push several years ago, so there's a couple of areas we want to enhance a little bit. And also talks about some other renovations in the district, so when that's all formulated, I can discuss that with the board as well.
Do we have any other comments?
Yes, I attended the Dutchess County School Board Association meeting last week. The main topics were, we talked about the search for new executive director, because in case you weren't aware, the executive director resigned last year, she went on to take another position, but she was taking up too much of her time, it's a part-time position, but she felt that she couldn't devote the time to it anymore. So we've had an interim executive director, and we started a search for a new executive director, so that was part of the discussion. We also had, at prior meetings, talked about the Dutchess County School Board Association website, it was kind of out of date, so they're in the middle of constructing a new website with better maintainability by us poor volunteers, and the other site really was very difficult to maintain. With more modern technology, it's easier to maintain, so that will be something that the, we'll be revealing shortly. Also, the president resigned because his job was taking up too much of his time, and he felt he couldn't be the president anymore, so we have a new president, and I was nominated and appointed as the vice president.
Congratulations, Bill.
Thank you. I didn't mention it.
And who's the president?
John Rudy, in Pauling District. That's my report, Dutchess County School Board Association.
Very good, congratulations. Any other comments? I would like, on behalf of the board, to thank Mr. Wright for his presentation tonight, and all of his guests. He mentioned it takes great courage to speak before this crowd, and that young man had lots of courage, so congratulations to him. I'd like to thank Mr. Arthur and Mr. Trazee for the presentation tonight. We hear that great work is coming from Sargent School, and we look forward to additional reports from Sargent as the year progresses. I would like to congratulate our football team on a great season, and I would like to wish great luck to the Beacon players, and I encourage everyone to attend and play if possible. And that's it for tonight. Do we have a motion for the personnel agenda?
Motion to approve personal agenda items A through J.
Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Do we have a motion for the consent agenda?
Motion to approve consent agenda items 12.2 through 12.7.
Second. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Do we have a motion for the addendum?
Motion to approve the addendum to the personnel agenda, item K as attached.
Second. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion, oh, there was a correction on the addendum. Yes? I'm sorry, I didn't point out earlier that there was a correction on the addendum. It should read not to exceed 10 hours per week, not $10 per hour per week. Do we need to, motion to approve it again? Just, we're good there. Do we have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.